Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting of the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District Board of Trustees to order for November 18th, 2021. That's Secretary, who was? You're the secretary. Vice President's secretary. Okay. Two hats. Call the board, please.
President Brown.
Here.
Mr. Sulu, here. Mayor DeGeeter. Mayor Bachi.
President.
Ms. Dumas. Mr. Joyce.
Here.
Mayor Alai.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Let's have now the approval of the minutes from our November 4th, 2021 meeting.
No changes or additions or deletions. Prove.
A motion by Mayor Alai. Second by Mr. Joyce. Is there a question? No question. The minutes will stand approved as they are printed then. Thank you. Now ask the CEO if anybody has signed up to speak during the public session of our general, I specifically agenda topic.
They have not, Mr. President.
All right, then we will have your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Beginning with the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, we have five active cases among district employees. This brings us to 116 confirmed positive cases since the beginning of the pandemic, with 111 folks recovered and returned to work. We have two employees with COVID-like symptoms who are awaiting their test results, and no employees remaining at home because a member of their household has tested positive. So as we come to the end of 2021, I would like to briefly look back at the year and then look ahead to 2022 and introduce our 2022 to 2024 strategic plan. So you all have a copy of this in handout form, this here and now document, and I just want to highlight a couple of things in 2021 under people and relationships, projects and programs, and finances, and future. As we look at people and relationships, I think it's very fair to say that the employees of the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District handled incredibly well the second year of the pandemic and got a huge amount of work accomplished this year. So with our response to COVID-19, we focused on reconstituting our staff safely and efficiently, and also being very forthright and direct about vaccination, making sure that people had the time that they needed to get vaccinated and to deal with the, any side effects that might have, get information out as well. We also continued our work on racial justice, diversity, equity, and inclusion. This was the first year with department-specific DE and I goals, metrics, and KPIs to allow us to track advancements and obstacles at the department level as opposed to the organization at a larger scale. And that department granularity, I think, is very, very important. And then we continued our advocacy on affordability and equity, both at the local level with you all adopting with the 2022 to 2026 rates, improvements and enhancements to our affordability program, as well as at the national level. And we are very focused as we go into 2022 to making sure that our customers are aware of our affordability programs and taking advantage of those programs. As we go to projects and programs, we continued our work with US EPA and Ohio EPA and the Department of Justice to modify our consent decree around Project Clean Lake. We're 10 years in on that consent decree, and we noted the completion of the Done Valley Tunnel System, having the East Side Tunnel Systems be complete, and that is quite a significant accomplishment of the district. And the beginning of our Shoreline Tunnel, which is our first soft ground tunnel, with all the complexities that that brings along with it. The Regional Stormwater Management Program hit the $80 million mark in terms of investing in projects for flooding, erosion, and water quality. Stormwater master plans were completed, identifying over $1 billion in need across the region for stormwater projects, and the local sewer system evaluation studies were also completed. And those have laid the foundation and been the technical support for $47 million in member community infrastructure investment since the beginning of that program. We also completed our strategic plan for 2022 through 2024, which I'll talk about in just a minute, and not noted on this slide, but I do want to highlight that Easterly, Southerly, and Westerly again received peak performance awards from the National Association of Clean Water Agencies. And as we look at finances and the future, obviously, the huge work of 2021 was the adoption of the rates for 2022 through 2026. $41 million to date invested in the Business Opportunity Program or made available to our small minority and women-owned businesses, and then a big focus on savings, both in terms of finances work, on debt refinancing, and then operation and maintenance focus on energy savings and efficiencies at all of our facilities. So that's 2021 in four minutes, and now I just wanted to talk about the strategic plan for 2022 through 2024. You have this at your seats, and you'll notice right from the beginning that it looks different. You have this great blue file folder. Then you have a document which is meant to pull people in. It's already marked up. It's got highlighters. I'm waiting for like the thought cloud and maybe the cigar coming from my picture, which would come later, but that's all encouraged in terms of people finding themselves in the strategic plan. And I just want to recognize Constance and her team for coming up with this different approach, even to printing it on paper that people are comfortable writing on, as opposed to the glossy paper that you can't even put a pen on. So I think that this is really cool, and every member of the district staff, everyone at the district will get a copy of this for their use. So the strategic plan holds true to the five strategic areas of focus. Do you have a question, President Brown?
No, no.
Okay.
I just look puzzled like this.
Okay, sorry. The strategic plan continues our five strategic areas of focus: customer and community connections, environmental protection and sustainability, financial viability, operational excellence, and workforce planning, engagement, and investment. And we really, again, took a hard look at the strategic plan to make sure that every employee at the district can find their work in the strategic plan. So that is just a brief look at the 2022 to 2024 strategic plan, and then I will just close with my 2022 priorities. I've shared these with senior staff. They have shared these with their managers, and everyone is now, as you know, through our performance management system, putting their goals together for 2022 around these priorities and the strategic plan. So of course, to continue to guide the organization through the pandemic, which is having a long tail, I hope it's the tail, and then also to make sure that we take any lessons learned about the future of work, the role of remote work going forward. We will also obviously focus on successfully implementing the 2022 to 2026 rates with a focus on our affordability programs and our financial management strategies. We have some big retirements coming up in the next three to five years, so looking at proactive and comprehensive succession planning across the organization, to continue to participate in and to lead local and national discussions around affordability and equity in this conversation, to make sure that all of us, because everyone is a leader in their, in their space in the district, that we're all competent in diversity, equity, and inclusion, and understand how racism and other forms of discrimination can hold folks back, and we need to push through that. We're also looking, we've seen President Biden now sign $55 billion for water infrastructure. We need to make sure that that money comes home for district projects and for member community projects, and a big focus on that in 2022, hopefully completing the modifications to the consent decree governing Project Clean Lake, managing our reputation, both internal and external, obviously, continuing to focus on the relationships with labor and management, and making sure that that is effective across all of the work that we do. And then, I believe this is the last one, right, John? Always save the best for the, for last. I just want to make sure as you're planning your holidays to look forward to the adoption, hopefully, of revisions to Title III, which is the separate sewer code, and Title IV, which is the combined sewer code. We hope to bring those for your consideration in 2022. So, Mr. President, that's my report.
Thank you for those highlights. Lot of work accomplished under very challenging times, and I wish I could say that, you know, that was, that's the end of it, but we're still in it, and so we, we continue to be optimistic about what the future holds for us, but in the meantime, we, staff, to remain laser-focused on the public's expectation.
That's right.
In terms of where we are with this agency. It was interesting to hear you comment that we're in the 10th year of our, of the consent decree, and so I always kind of like looking back at plans in terms of what we kind of proposed, where we thought we'd be, and then where, where are we actually in terms of not just implementation, spending the money, but impact and the ability to have the impact with respect to what the goals were for limiting, mitigating, or eliminating, getting rid of CSO, if you would. So kind of that in the backdrop of, you had CSO in one corner and stormwater, which was a smaller issue at the point in time, but it seems to be almost as critical in my mind, particularly kind of given what's happening with us because of climate change and other things. So be maybe a good idea at some point in the future, just for us to take a look at how we have aligned with what our goals were and what, whether or not the assumptions that we were using are good, you know, have, are positive, negative, or indifferent as it relates to goals and outcomes, so.
Okay.
All right.
Yep, appreciate that.
Great. All right, let's go to action items then. Let's start with authorization to advertise, beginning with request for authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio revised code, section 6119.104, three-year requirement contract for refractory inspection and repair services, anticipated expenditure $178,000. Request for authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio revised code, section 6119.104, one-year requirement contract for ferric chloride solution at all wastewater treatment plants with an anticipated expenditure of $510,000. Request for authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio revised code, section 6119.104, for the Big Creek Flood Reduction near Sprague Road Project with an anticipated expenditure $937,000. Request for authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio revised code, section 6119.104, for the Southerly Fire Alarm and Fire Protection Upgrades Project, anticipated expenditure of $625,000. And then finally, request for authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio revised code, section 6119.104, for one-year contract via software support and maintenance.
Move for adoption of Resolutions 363 through 36721.
Motion by Mayor Alai.
Second.
Second by Mr. Joyce. Is there a question? There are no questions, then without objection, they're approved.
36321 through 36721.
Thank you. Let's go to authorization to enter into agreement. Let's start with request for authorization entered to professional services agreement, Chogga County, Chogga Community College, excuse me, to provide support with a third cycle of the district's maintenance training program for the period January 3, 2022 through January 2, 2026, in an amount not to exceed $175,000. A request for authorization entered into a loan agreement with Ohio EPA and Ohio Water Development Authority to accept WPCLF funding for construction costs related to the Shoreline Storage Tunnel project, one amount up to $201,580,000. Hard to even say that. All right, then a request for authorization to enter into a state supplemental environmental project agreement with National Park Service and Agents, and agency of the United States federal government for the district's operation and maintenance of the canal pump station for 25-year period as required under Appendix Six of the District's Consent Decree with the United States, the United States Environmental Protection Agency, the United States Department of Justice, and the State of Ohio.
Move to adopt 368 through 370-21.
Motion by Mr. Joyce.
Second.
Second by Mayor Bachi. Questions? Well, you know, I need a, just a little bit of an overview of kind of the, I want to call it, I'll call it the debt instrument we're using for this $201 million plus. You know, normally, we enter into about a 30-year agreement. This one's, this one's 40, and so I'm sure there are good reasons for that, including, I'm sure the useful life of the project, et cetera, so.
Good afternoon, President Brown, members of the board.
Good afternoon.
As you pointed out, President Brown, that this is not a typical WPCLF loan. We're anticipating taking advantage of some new features to the WPCLF program through this loan that I'll go into. I want to first point out that a lot of work has gone into, into this project to get us to this point. Brandon Nittle, our manager of debt and treasury, and I have worked very closely with our financial advisors from Baker Tilly, Mark Miller, and Tom Rishudo, who are here, as well as support from bond counsel, Ryan, Ryan Calendar from Squire Patton Boggs, and Katie Wag from our legal department as well. But the, so I'll briefly go through the background of how we came to this point with this recommended financing mechanism, and then look, walk briefly through the analysis of how we realized this is the choice we wanted to move forward with, and then talk about the conclusions. So the, as you mentioned, President Brown, Shoreline Storage Tunnel is a $201 million project. So as we go through our financial planning, we are, we identified this project as one large enough in dollar size that it merited special consideration. It's a, it's about the size of some of our prior bond issues on its own. So we wanted to take a good look at the best way to finance this project. It was always planned to be a WPCLF-funded project, but as I mentioned, we're now able to take advantage of some new features of that program. The program historically began as a very, very rigid program in that there weren't very many options for financing. The original program was pretty much a 20-year straight amortization program, so you could take out a 20-year loan on any project. It grew over time to allow 30-year, which we've been able to take advantage of for some of our sewer and consent decree work. And the next, the next phase of this evolution has been this structured piece, where we can utilize this ability to take, modify the payments over time to best fit our debt profile. This is something that we've done in the past on every one of the bond issues that we've done. So for example, the 2010 bond issue, we still don't have a principal payment on that issue until 2026. So this is not a new activity for the district. It is new in relation to the loan program. So the, the terms that we're looking for, for this loan are a 40-year amortization. Bond counsel's recommendation is that's our authority to, our limited authority to go in terms of debt term. That is longer than our typical 30-year amortization per our debt policy. We feel this is appropriate because the Shoreline Storage Tunnel is a very long-lived asset. We'll depreciate it on our financials for 75 years, and it could have 100-plus-year useful life. So the, the term of the debt is well within the life of the asset. The structure that we're, we're hoping to move forward with also includes deferred principal payments. So we'll make a minimum of about a quarter of a percent of the original loan amount as our principal payments through 2040, plus semiannual interest. The cost of this structure, so basically the cost of it being different than a normal amortization, is about 70 basis points, or 0.7% over WPCLF's normal already low rate, and I'll go into some details of the analysis of these numbers. This structuring accomplishes several things. In the near term, it provides rate relief, and I'll, this will become more clear as I go through some of the tables, but by shifting some of this principal into future years, where we have currently better debt service capacity, will allow us to continue as we have in the past by structuring debt to smooth rate increases over time and help us avoid large spikes in the next 10 to 15 years. Provides us flexibility moving forward to take on additional debt if we need to in the current term, and is still a significantly lower cost of borrowing than going to the capital markets for this sort of transaction. So very briefly, this would be the amortization of a traditional 30-year loan if we took that with OWDA for this project. Approximately $8 million a year in total debt service, principal and interest through 2052, and the schedule will change depending on how the project progresses and when it closes, but a 30-year term, equal payments. What we're proposing here is a structure where essentially we have about $4 million a year payments through 2040, with payments that then increase in 2041 and on. And the next slide lays those two over each other just to show what that looks like visually, but then the next slide really helps tell the picture. So the gray, the gray bars on these slides represent our current outstanding debt service. So you see a pretty steady level of about $100 million or so in currently outstanding debt through 2040, and then that profile drops off in 2041. So the blue on top of that represents the additional cost of debt service associated with Shoreline Storage Tunnel under a traditional loan. The same picture using the structured loan shows our attempt to push those debt service payments out past 2040, when we already have capacity to take those on. We already know we're going to take on fewer loans going forward, so this really impacts our ability to control rates in this current year, this current period here from about 20, 2021 through 2040. It lessens the pressure on those periods, taking advantage of available debt service capacity in the future periods. So what does that cost us? So a standard 30-year term, standard 30-year term loan for Shoreline Storage Tunnel project would be at a current estimated interest rate of about 0.81%. Amazing interest rates. In the middle, the, the capital market, so as I mentioned, we've done this before with bonds, but never with loans. We could expect if we went to the market to, to structure debt in this way today to pay about 3%, so almost $200 million worth of interest on the project versus about $23 million through OWDA. The structured program obviously has higher interest because it's a combination of higher interest rate and a longer term, but the term that we would pay, the interest rate we would pay is 1.56% on 40-year debt. That is almost unthinkable in terms of the, the rate for a 40-year loan that we'd be able to take. So it does cost more in total interest over time to do this, but the benefits are those near-term rate pressures are relieved, and we put debt into years that have the capacity to pay for it in the future. Helps with the overall plan to smooth rate increases over time. So, so to summarize, the 40-year term is longer than our standard term, but we believe that it's appropriate for an asset of this nature. It's a long-lived asset, and the debt will be paid off within its lifetime. This will allow us to allocate debt service to periods with greater debt service capacity and of smooth rates as we look forward into the future. So now is really the time to plan for 2041 and on. As I mentioned, the, the debt is retired within the asset's useful life of 75 years. The, the higher interest rate in longer term do result in greater total interest costs versus the traditional loan, but the structure will allow for lower projected annual rate increases from 2027 to 2040, reducing those by about 0.2% a year. So this is a tool that we could use, again, we have a southerly tunnel coming up that's going to be in excess, in excess of $300 million based on estimates right now. Applying a tool like this to that as well, we could look at, we could be seeing, you know, half percent impact on rates every year by structuring debt in this way for these long-lived, high-dollar assets. So really, as I mentioned, this is not a new So really, as I mentioned, this is not a new process for the district. We've done this before in capital markets, but by working with OWDA, as they continue to grow and expand their program based on our needs, we could do the same thing significantly cheaper through them than by going to the bond market. So I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? No.
Sir.
All right. Great. Thank you. Great. That's a very explicit, but does explain why we're doing what we're doing, so good decision. Appreciate it. Thank you. Just if I could, on 370-21, this just looks like just a little bit different kind of arrangement than I, I don't think I've ever seen one like this. So, and I know it's with the National Park Service. I'm sure there's a, the driver for it, which is a, there's a dam somewhere that would take, that's being taken out somehow. There is a downstream effect, and somebody's building a pump station. Looks like we're going to be taking care of it for a period of time, so if you could just kind of go through the, how we got into this arrangement.
Yeah. President Brown, members of the board, the short answer is this is a requirement under the consent decree. And to just give a little bit of history, what we're talking about is the Brexville Dam. It's also been known as the Route 82 Station Road or Canal Diversion Dam. It has, and it's on the Cuyahoga River. It's now actually has been removed. It was originally constructed in 1827 for the purpose of providing additional water flow into the Ohio Erie Canal. So it's been around for a while. But the Ohio EPA and the US EPA looked at this dam as one of several causes of non-attainment of water quality standards. And this was all occurring prior to the consent decree entry, which we entered into. And so when they looked at that, they determined that, that the dam should be removed. And with the removal of the dam, the supply of the water from the river into the canal would end. And so they needed to figure out a way to get water into the canal after the dam was removed. And so the way that we've determined to do that, well, we didn't determine, but EPA determined that we would build a pump station. And that pump station was actually built by the Friends of Crooked River, and I believe there was funding from the City of Akron, and the National Park Service was involved as well. And so as part of the penalty portion of our consent decree, Ohio EPA determined that our penalty would be that we would operate and maintain this pump station for 25 years. And so this agreement that we're asking you to authorize today would be the agreement with the National Park Service to facilitate our operation and maintenance of the agreement, or of the pump station for 25 years.
Okay. That's to the point. All right. Appreciate that explanation. Any other questions, comment? There being none without objection, they're approved.
368 through 370-21.
Thank you very much. Let's go to authorization entered into contract. This is for authorization entered into a construction contract for Sterling Professional Group for the George J. McMonagle Administration Building Second Floor HR Area Office Space Renovation Project, an amount not to exceed $371,018.80.
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Sulik.
Second.
Second by Mayor Bachi. Question? There's no question without objection. It's approved.
371-21.
Here, let's do authorization of contract modification. There's a request authorizing final adjusting change order for contract number 200001990 with Maru's Brothers Construction, Inc. for the CSO Outfall Repairs and Improvement Project by decreasing the contract amount by $225,940.38, thereby bringing the total contract amount to $1,997,559.62. Move to adopt. Motion by Mr. Joyce.
Second.
Second by Mayor Alai. Question? No question without objection. It's approved.
372-21.
Okay. Then we have property-related transactions. We're going to hold 374-21. So let's go, 373-21. Let's go authorization to acquire 18 permanent stormwater easements. The property is known as, parter parcel number is 43209019, located in the city of Brooklyn, 45433001, 45515007, 45522004, 45522010, 45522007, 45522011, 45524002, 45512002, 455112017, 45513004, 4551301, 45515049, 4551201, 45512052, 45515047, 455614081, and 4561401, all located in the city of Parma, owned by the West Creek Conservancy, necessary for the construction and maintenance of the Big Creek. Greenway project with total consideration of $1. You put me for that for a dollar? Feel like I just took an eye exam.
Move for adoption of resolution, 373-21.
Second. Motion by Mayor Alai. Second by Mayor Bachi. Question? No question without objection. It's approved.
373-21.
All right. And then finally, let's go request for authorization to acquire one temporary easement at property known as, parter parcel number 45724017, located on Celeste Drive in the city of Parma, owned by the city of Parma, necessary for construction and maintenance of Baldwin Creek Relief Colvert at the Storm's Drive in Parma, project with total consideration of $1.
Move to adopt 375-21.
Motion by Mr. Sulik.
Second.
Second by Mr. Joyce. Question? Question without objection, and it's approved.
375-21.
Very good. That takes care of our information, not action items, I'm sorry. We have one information item, which is the program management status report.
Good afternoon, President Brown, members of the board.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is the monthly update on the capital improvement program for October 2021. In addition to my normal update, I am also going to be updating two construction projects. Both of those are doing work on the Morgana Run Colvert or the Burke, Burke Colvert. So looking first at cash flow, we ended the month of October at 93% of planned. This is down from the previous month, where we closed at 98%. As I'd mentioned last month, the reason for that huge spike back in September was to do, to the fact that we had two pay applications on the Shoreline Storage Tunnel that came in. In regards to actual dollars paid out, we paid out approximately $7.5 million in the month of October, and year-to-date, we're track, we're tracking at $129 million. So moving on to our key performance indicators, we awarded the construction contract for the district-wide HVAC equipment and systems upgrades project. That was awarded within 60 days of planned meeting the KPI. We, however, did not meet our KPI in the engineer's estimate, as the average of the three lowest bids on this project came in at 12% under that estimate. We also awarded the construction contract for the Pearl Jennings Road Storage Tank and Pump Station Upgrades Project. This contract was also awarded within 60 days of planned meeting the KPI, and in this case, we did meet the engineer's estimate KPI as the average of the three lowest bids was within 10% of that estimate. We, moving on to construction-level KPIs, we achieved substantial completion of the Dome Valley Regulators and Relief Sewers Project. That was achieved within 90 days of planned meeting the KPI. I will also note that this is the last project of Control Measure 8 of our consent decree, which is the Dome Valley Tunnel System, and a critical milestone of our consent decree was to chief cooperation of that control measure by the end of this year. So with the completion of that project, we are also achieving that critical milestone. We also closed the construction contract for the Eastley-Westley Low Voltage Equipment Replacement Project. That contract was closed within 95% of the original contract amount meeting the KPI, and we also met our KPI on the Business Opportunity Program goals. The goals on that project was set at 10% MBEWBE, and the projected actual is 22.34%. Looking at the total work orders as a percent of construction, those came in at 4.43%, which equates about $456,000. And then the breakdown of where those categories, those work orders were performed under, the majority fell to owner-requested changes, and then the remaining was in the differing or unforeseen site conditions. So with that, we'll move on to the construction highlights, which again are two projects doing work on the Morgana Run Colvert or the Burke, Burke Colvert. So starting first, we have the Morgana and Burke Systems Improvement Project. This is a $6.7 million construction contract. Under this project, we're rehabbing approximately 15,000 linear feet of the colverts. With these, this rehab, we're looking to maintain the structural integrity of the colvert, as well as the flow capacity or conveyance within those systems, and also in some cases, improving that flow conveyance. And this project is scheduled to achieve substantial completion in May of next year. So the work on this project could be lumped into three categories, or at least I lumped it into three categories. The first is cleaning and spot repairs. Approximately 10,000 linear feet is, falls to this category. This includes repairs such as crack and mortar repairs, some tire replacements. We also have some reinforced concrete repairs that need to be done. We have some areas of some significant debris removal, as you can see there in that middle photo. Obviously, that's a location where more significant rehab needs to be done. And then also of note is the need for bypass pumping. This is obviously a live sewer system, so in order to do some of this work, some bypass pumping is required. The next category is relining. About 2,650 feet of relining is going to be done. The photos here show a relining on the Burke system. This is specifically a glass reinforced plastic segmental lining system that is being installed within the existing colvert and then grounded into place. And with this relining, it also improves the flow conveyance in that area. And then finally, we have about 2,300 feet of actual full replacement of sections of the colvert where it was just in that bad of a repair situation that it needed replaced. So this is a photo of the Morgana Run where we're replacing a stretch of the existing colvert with a 48-inch reinforced concrete pipe. The next project, we have the Burke, Burke Open Channel Improvements Project. This is a $4.1 million construction contract. Under this project, we're replacing two sections that are open channel, and again, these are colverts that carry CSO. So with, the thought here is, you know, limiting exposure to CSO in those areas. And then we also have some regulator modifications as part of this contract necessary for required CSO control. This project, which is scheduled to achieve substantial completion in October of next year, is actually way ahead of schedule. We're actually working on some punch, punchless items as we speak, as well as some final site restoration. So just quickly, I don't know if you can see my cursor, just to walk you through what we're doing. So if you look at down at the bottom of the aerial photo, you see this really light pink line. That's closed colvert, and it continues closed going north until it hits that red location, and that's where the colvert opens up. It remains open until you get up to this point where it eventually then crosses under I-77. Again, it's closed off for that short stretch, and then it reopens again, open channel flow there until it connects further downstream at that twin barrel colvert. So looking first at that section on the west of I-77, just some photos of the open channel, again, where active CSO can flow through that channel during wet weather. And then just some photos of the active construction where we replace that open channel with closed pipe. And then a picture of that final restoration where we've also reestablished the storm, storm-only drainage channel on top for, you know, the overland flow and stormwater-only flow in that location. And then moving to the east side of I-77, again, some photos of that open channel before construction. I will point out where that red arrow, that's actually a location of an actual CSO outfall that discharges directly to that open channel prior to flowing downstream. Over here, that's the twin barrel colvert, where it eventually closes again. And then again, just some photos of the active construction where we replace those open channel sections with closed pipe, 60 to 90 inch in diameter. And then once again, the final restoration of those sites, again, where we reestablished the storm-only drainage channel in that location. So with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Questions? Slide 30. Thank you very much for that overview. All right. Let's move along here. Open session. Anything for the good of the order? All right. I'd ask then, Madam CEO, has anybody signed up to speak during the public session portion of our agenda on any subject matter?
They have not, Mr. President.
We have one matter for executive session?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Pursuant to Highway Act Code, Section 121.22 G1, I hereby move to enter an executive session to consider the employment and compensation of a public employee, sir.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Let's have a roll call. Oh, you want to do that too, don't you?
President Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Sulik, yes. Mayor Bachi?
Yes.
Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
Mayor Alai?
Yes.
All right. Let's go to executive session.
Yes.
All right, let's go to executive session. Back to the room.
Thank you.